Wojciechowski?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Mugrower?
Here.
Hanson, excused. Miller?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Six present.
Okay, and Councilmember Wojciechowski will lead us in our invocation, followed by our Trinity Lutheran students leading the pledge.
Thank you. As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to the city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
Don't drop it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Nina, congratulations. Thank you. And Maya, thank you so much.
Mom, Dad, if you want pictures with the mirror, go ahead and take them.
Thank you.
Next, we have some introduction of new staff.
Yes, I'd like to introduce a new city assessor. Robert Kilday was hired in January as our new city assessor. Rob actually has some experience working here in Oshkosh. He lives in Oshkosh right now, but he also was a consultant that worked with one of our contractors to help with the commercial appraisals. So, very familiar with the area, and we're really excited to have him on board in the assessor's office.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Congrats.
Fantastic to be here. I look forward to a fantastic career with absolutely no controversies.
Hey, I'll be talking to you after the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, great. Okay, we'll move on to citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone registered?
We do. I apologize, technical difficulties, but I know that we have Patricia Deener signed up, and I'll find out who else in just a minute.
Okay. Patty, welcome.
My name is Patricia Deener. I come to you this evening. In regard to, I received a letter, I don't care if it's gone back a couple months or not, I received a letter for somebody that was taken care of through the city. Okay, but if I'm good for six months, it's all right. Well, I call it bulliness, not harassment. I know what bulliness is. I've been bullied all my life, most of my years. And it's wrong. And if you guys would like to see this, I'm not going to read it, but if you'd like to see it, you're welcome to see it. It was turned over to the city attorney, and Amy, she did what she had to do, and I don't think it was right. I received this letter after I took a gentleman to court. The words you probably don't want to hear, but I'm going to tell you. Here. Here.
All right.
I don't care. You guys got to hear it, because this is what these people are doing.
You're on TV, though.
I can't help it. I've been been by these guys that won't stop in this rustle right, and a few others. And it's got to stop, and the city better take care of stuff, not let this slacken.
Okay, we're not going to...
And that's all I got to say. And you know what? I can't blame the police department for everything. You people need to take and do your job right. Somebody comes on my property and don't belong on it, it ain't just trespassing, it's other things. I could sue if I wanted to, but I'm not putting up with this. And I just want to let you know, I didn't even want to say this tonight, but I'm sick of holding it. And I'm sick of going to Conrad, the captain. I'm sick of having my officers come out. And I'm tired of it. And you know what? Maybe the house is up for sale. My family and friends want me to move up north. Patty, why do you put up with this? Tell me why. This city don't care. For your information, when I said I was manhandled, I was. I have injuries. It was such a force. I just found out the last few months. So, how would you like to hear that? And I want to thank you guys for listening, but the city has to get done with your business. Everything's slack by. And if you've got audio in here, or audio in any of the things, you'd better check in everything before you start auditing, because we have personal rights. And I want to thank people that did pull the plug for me. I want to thank Bergstrom Automotive. I want to thank Community Credit Union for sponsoring me. I want to thank Cordell's. I want to thank the two brothers. I want to thank Marathon. These people know how I stand, and I don't have to put up with it no more. And I don't know if my husband's here. He just wouldn't come up, because he's tired of it all. Very tired. And I'm sorry what I had to say, but you're going to have to understand what we have put up with.
We just can't tolerate that language, but thank you, Patty.
I know, but you know what?
You've always been respectful.
I've heard it in your neighborhood.
You've always been respectful.
I know, but now it's time to let everything out, what I need to say, because it's not right. And you people need to listen, because you are putting all these ordinance, you're not following it, you're letting people pass by with things. The cops have to come make false accusations. It's not true. There's going to be more videos now, because it's not true, saying it's not true. When cops have to come out and deal with it, it's bulliness. And I'm going to tell you, it's bulliness. Not harassment, it's bulliness.
We're still working through technical difficulties. If you could ask if there's anybody else?
Okay, if you have a desire to come and speak at citizen statements for items that are not on the agenda, raise your hand. Come forward, sir. State your name and address for the record up here.
Watch your language, wimpy.
What do I get the... Put that on, I'm old school.
I think he's...
Is this related to an agenda item?
Uh, it's asterisk. It's the first reading of it.
Oh, that'll be called separately.
We'll call it, sorry.
Yep.
This is just for general comments, not related to agenda items. So, we'll call you back up.
Which item is it regarding, just so I can...
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two?
The angled parking ball.
Okay. We'll have you come back up then.
Have a seat, and we'll get to you back to you in a minute.
Is that good? I don't know when.
That will work when it comes your time.
All right, you're the man.
But you got to come back, though. Now's not the time to talk about this.
This is general citizen statements for items not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda. So, when we get to twenty-two, that...
It was asterisk, so it was...
Okay.
Phenomena.
Just for a few minutes, you're done.
Is there anyone else that had a general citizen statement that's not regarding an item listed on the agenda later on?
We are back up and running.
All right. We will move to consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. So, move. Discussion on consent. I believe Councilmember Ford, you want to poll?
Yeah. Yeah, I need number eighteen polled, just the committee on aging appointment.
All right. Any other discussion on the remaining consent agenda items? All right, please call the roll on consent minus number eighteen.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson, excused. Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, and back to resolution twenty-three eighty-six, number eighteen, appointments to various boards and commissions.
I'll move it.
Second. Discussion, Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, my wife's one of the people being appointed, or trying to be appointed, so I'm voting present.
I'll be voting no.
I'll let her know.
All right, any further discussion on resolution twenty-three eighty-six? All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Present.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson? Sorry. Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried five.
All right. We'll move on to new ordinances, and the first one is twenty-three eighty-eight. There's no action on the first, these four new ordinances. Amend loading zone and parking regulations around Jefferson Elementary School on Eleventh Avenue and Minnesota Street. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this item tonight? This is the first reading. Okay. Secondly, twenty-three eighty-nine, prohibit right turn on red from westbound Sixth Avenue onto Ohio Street. Would anyone like to speak to this item? And I don't see Mr. Robbie here. If I recall, this is because the buildings that are on the corner are too close, and it's the vision triangle it impacts.
Yeah, Mr. Collins has been working on this issue.
Yeah, thanks. I can give you a quick, that's basically it. The buildings are really close to the intersection at Sixth and Ohio, so our bus drivers, as well as some other residents, have reported that cars are pulling out in front of them. So, in order to help mitigate that, the Traffic Advisory Board recommended prohibiting right on red. I know that it's not always going to be possible to enforce, but at least that'll make people aware that they should probably think twice before making that turn.
Thank you. All right, and ordinance twenty-three ninety, add angled parking east side of Bowman Street between Tyler Avenue and Van Buren Avenue in the vicinity of the marina located at one thousand Bowman Street. Is the gentleman back here, is this the one you want to speak on?
Yes.
All right, come on up. Told you it was quick.
Terry Schroder, correct?
Yep.
And if you could give your address, please.
Terry Schroder, ten-ten Bowman.
Thank you, welcome.
I would like to thank the city council and all involved who are hearing my comments. I'm a lifelong residence of the neighborhood, being raised at ten-twelve Van Buren, corner of Bowman and Van Buren. My wife, Diane, and I built in two thousand twelve at our current location, ten-ten Bowman. The marina in discussion is located just to the south of my current residence.
Is there a switch on there that... Oh, there we go.
Got it?
Yeah.
We rehearse this. All right.
So, yours is the palace to the north?
This is my residence here. This is the right-of-way, and this is the right-of-way here. This is the marina in discussion, Van Buren near Bowman. Bill Castle had owned the marina previously for thirty-five-plus years, renting out seasonal boat slips to private individuals, parking their boats parallel to the seawall, such as a boat here, and they tie up along the seawall. Depending on the year and the lengths of boats, he would get ten to fourteen boats parked in the marina. Midwest Rental wants ten-plus angled parking stalls added to the front of the facility to accommodate vehicle parking and bring them up to tow, which, Kelly, if I make a mistake, correct me, which would be in this area here when they expand. It's four or five, and my neighbors, my neighbors and I stated to the traffic and parking meeting two weeks ago, the marina has more equipment than should be placed on premise according to code. We pointed out to the advisory board, the angled parking will only allow them to continue as the marina has in the past years with ten to fourteen rental slips around the perimeter of the seawall. This will not include the extra equipment Midwest rents out. The advisory board said that they could not control that issue. They passed the request, which was passed on to you for a vote. I feel the advisory board let us down as a neighborhood by not listening and doing their due diligence. With that in mind, we as a neighborhood come to you to get you up to speed on what's happened in a few short years Midwest has been there. Since the new owners, Midwest Rental has taken over the marina, it has been nothing but continuous growth with more and more people. I was excited at first to see Bill selling the property and someone new coming in. Now with another building on the premises, sales of ice, beer, et cetera, and all the equipment they put on premise for rental, it's not a quiet neighborhood marina. Once a young boy came over to my yard, picked up my dog's tennis balls and taped them. We've had literally people walk over from the marina and sit down on our dock, which you saw earlier over here. And when I asked them what's up, they thought, oh, this is a park. They thought they were just there enjoying. Not a big deal, because I'm sure you can appreciate the privacy of your backyard. One gentleman parked next to my yard in the city right-of-way, stripped down, put his swimwear on. One renter from the marina left his boat trailer parked in the right-of-way for three weeks, in which the city did nothing. Again, no big deal, and it's not the marina's fault. I'm not holding them to blame for what their customers do, but I think you get the idea how it's not compliant any longer. The marina has already added six finger piers that run east-west from the west seawall, right here. The boats used to park right along it, now they got the finger piers that had more boats. Again, increasing the watercraft slips in which they have no parking for vehicles. City Code, Chapter thirty, Article three, page fifty-one, two UC, clearly states, marinas, yacht club, boat slips, boat docking facilities, boat libraries, and rentals, one space per watercraft kept on site. So, they need one parking spot for a vehicle for every watercraft. When I found out the vehicle, or when I found out the marina wanted to add ten to thirty more boat slips in a fall of twenty-two, getting increasing your parking problems, I truly concern as a concerned citizen in the neighborhood. I went to the city and found out, and then he said they put a hole on it, I guess. My concern is, if the city allows ten angled stalls that the marina is requesting, by city code, can they only have ten watercraft kept on site? With that number in mind, the original docking they had when purchased would be all the watercraft they could have on the premises. The additional six piers they installed was more than they should have been allowed by the city. How does the city control overnight parking in the stalls due to sobriety, motor homes, campers, and such? Last summer, a motor home sat at the marina for a few weeks. Right there. How does the city police this situation and protect the neighborhood as stated in codes? The neighborhood does not want parking up and down Bowman, Tyler, and Van Buren in front of all our homes. Midwest Rental is too large for the facility they have. Adding ten to sixteen parking stalls is only a Band-Aid to cover a huge problem. The angled parking will just take care of the original slips that Bill used to rent out privately and when they purchased the facility. See nothing about all the extra equipment bought in for the rentals that they rent, two to three pontoons, four to six ray runners, four to six kayaks, and whatever number of paddle boats. In closing, I'm glad to see the city working with them on an issue that should have been caught before they bought the property. If they would keep it the same as it was and rent out the slips they had, it would be great. It's no secret that they cannot survive with only ten watercraft at the facility. With that being said, I, Terry Schroder, approve of the ten angled parking stalls Midwest wants at Midwest expense. But I want the city council and the city to be aware, make sure Midwest knows they cannot park, store, accumulate more pieces of watercraft as per code on their facility than they have parking stalls on premise. But mark my words, the next thing Midwest will want is a change of code to allow for more equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item?
Don Shuttle.
Don Shuttle, ten-twenty-one Bowman Street. I live one property away from the marina, next to Terry, across the street from Terry. I attended the Parking and Traffic Advisory Board meeting. It was stated at the meeting that we, the city, must bring the marina owners into compliance with parking. My question is, why? Why does the city feel it's their obligation to bring the marina into compliance with city ordinances? I worked for a landlord for several years. He had a step built at one of his houses. Six to eight months later, he was cited for doing the work without a permit. The city brought him into compliance. He had to remove the step, hire a contractor, take a permit, and rebuild it according to code. I'm not sure whether he got a fine on it. I say treat all taxpayers the same. There should be no favoritism. Tell the marina to comply. Don't make an exception for a pre-planned violation of city ordinances and codes. They put finger piers in after purchasing the property. They're business people. I doubt it was ignorance. Perhaps it's more like phase one. Perhaps they didn't need a city permit for the finger pier expansions, because it's on water. Perhaps it was only DNR permission that they needed. However, who builds a building without counting the cost? They knew they would need parking. It looked more like a pre-planned hardship, and for what reason? To generate more revenue at the expense in the peace of a neighborhood community? I'd like to remind the city council that they promote neighborhood communities, and the four points that are listed under the neighborhood community is to improve and maintain home and property values, to maintain a safe neighborhood, to promote pride of neighborhood place, and to build a spirit of the neighborhood. I understand that variances are for hardships. This is a pre-planned, created hardship, and should not qualify for the accommodations of the city's behalf in creating a parking lot for them. By granting special exclusive parking because it will only be used for their benefit, the city is unfairly treating the community, neighborhood in which I live. Furthermore, as Terry said, this may only open the door to some future expansion through another hardship, quote unquote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item?
Samuel Seibold.
Hello, my name is Sam Seibold, and I live at ten-twelve Van Buren. I know Don and Terry hit on a few points, so I will try not to repeat those. So, I bought my home on Van Buren around three years ago, and I've been able to witness this business transition. When I purchased my home, I used the Sold on Oshkosh program that the city offers, and this is a direct quote from that program. Our neighborhoods Engage brings together public and private resources to invest in neighborhoods through property improvements and stronger relations among neighbors. Together with Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods and other collaborators, the city of Oshkosh seeks to strengthen neighborhoods to achieve positive outcomes in four areas: market, image, physical conditions, and neighborhood management. The Marina District is only one of fifteen neighborhoods in the whole city where this program is eligible, and I would argue with the business expansion, this would not improve image, market, or neighborhood management. With more boat slips will come more street parking and congestions in a small neighborhood. If Sold on Oshkosh program goals is to help improve neighborhood management, I would argue this is doing the opposite. Noise, garbage, congestion, parking availability for homeowner visitors will all deteriorate rather than improving the neighborhood for the residents like this program was designed to do. And don't get me wrong, I believe there's a happy medium to help the neighborhood residents and this marina business, but right now, I think the vision is too large for the size and location of their property and business. Fifteen to eighteen, or however many parking slips they'll add, you know, won't be enough for their vision to expand. I think it's clear that their bottleneck is parking, plain and simple. And as Terry stated, the city code allows one watercraft per parking spot for vehicle on premise, and I think most of the neighborhood's residents' concerns are how will this be policed, rather. I, myself, am a part of a family business, and we have over a hundred and twenty-five employees, and this is located in Oshkosh. We understand that we have to follow the rules that the city puts in place, and I hope the marina does not get an exception. They should have understood the constraints associated with their location for this business and their visions for the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
There's no one else under this item?
All right. Just council, I have some questions for either Ms. Nyfarth or Mr. Robbie. What... I'm looking at the packet here. What number of slips and what jurisdiction do we have there, and where does that stop and start with DNR? But where are we at with that?
So, the DNR has jurisdiction to permit docks going off. They don't come to us and ask permission. So, there is a disconnect there. So, it just so happened that we saw a copy of a letter from the DNR saying they were reviewing it, and that's when we had requested that the owner withdraw their application to the DNR saying what you have existing is not in compliance. Now, they referenced the previous owner, and when we're talking, I would also say that that person was also running probably a commercial business marina. They rented the slips. That was a commercial business where they had all the, you mentioned, Mr. Schroder, ten to fourteen boats, so probably ten to fourteen cars were parked on the grass and probably on city property in right-of-way. So, really, our goal, which is separate from what you're looking at tonight, tonight is just parking. As part of the Bowman Street reconstruction, they are looking at dedicating additional right-of-way for angled parking. So, we've been working with engineering to add as much parking as we can to make sure that we can accommodate what is existing there today. So, we believe, we've been meeting with the owner the past couple weeks, and we do believe that we have enough parking stalls to, you know, meet the number of slips. Now, with that, it is going to be a plan, they will need to submit a plan development application to come forward to council, plan commission, for zoning approval. So, in time, council will be reviewing that, you know, that ask for, just for the use, and then probably some base standard modifications. But this is just, you know, purely for the parking right now.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Kelly, I just want to be clear. So, this parking is available to everybody, right?
It's in the right-of-way. Anybody could park there.
So, I mean, if somebody wanted to park there and walk their dog, or do whatever, it's open and available to everybody. So, it's not just the marina's parking. it's open and available to everybody, so it's not just the Marina's parking.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other discussion, we'll move on to 2391, approved zone change from single-family residential nine district, SR nine, to institutional district. I for properties located at 904 Grove and 847 Oak Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. And it's exciting to see some new homes being built over in that area.
This is actually the opposite. These are two homes that the school district is purchasing and will be demolishing as part of the Menominee, the new Menominee School that will be built over on Hazel.
Wrong block. I'm thinking a block away.
Yes, but the Grove Street Habitat is, they are building those, and they are doing wonderful with those.
All right. Again, these will come back to council at the next council meeting in two weeks. We'll move on to pending ordinances, and I apologize. Did we have anyone registered to speak on that item?
We did not.
Twenty-three ninety-one, the Grove Street Properties.
We did not.
Okay. Pending ordinance, twenty-three ninety-two, approved zone change from single-family residential five district and institutional district to sub- mixed use for properties located on the south side of the 2100 block of West Ninth Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there anyone registered on this item?
There is. Peter Lang.
Welcome, Mr. Lang.
You guys are moving fast. I wasn't paying attention. Peter Lang, 2300 White Swan, just here as the property owner, representative of the property owner, in case council has any questions. I have no specific comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone else registered?
Not under this item.
All right. Motion, second, council.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugerauer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, twenty-three ninety-three, approved zone change from multifamily residential twelve district to multifamily residential twelve district with a plan development overlay for property located on the north side of West Twentieth Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there anyone registered?
Yes, there is. Renee Richards Graff.
Welcome.
Thanks, everybody, for hearing our concerns tonight. I appreciate it. And my neighbors and I did put together a letter that we emailed out, and I do want to thank everyone who got back to me about that. We do appreciate that also. So I just, I don't want to belabor everything that we put in that email. I just want to bring up a few points that I actually think it's a good idea. But I've been reading about where cities have been doing these more in a planned pedestrian areas where they're combining high-density housing and businesses, but for pedestrians and for the point of cutting back on traffic. And our really big pushback here is the traffic around this area. And if you didn't live there and experience it every day, it's probably, if you're just driving by, it would be hard to take that in. But I did have a conversation with a policeman that was monitoring traffic late last year in an area where we walk our dogs, and he's fully aware that the average speed, probably after Trager, by the time you get to my house and pass, is about fifty-five to sixty miles an hour in a thirty to thirty-five mile an hour zone. And it's something that is on a really consistent basis. So we're really concerned about traffic. The zoning is for a business and not necessarily just for the coffee shop. So our concern is, they're saying it's a coffee shop, but if this is a spot zone for a business, it could become anything in the future that doesn't fit into the neighborhood. And I'm trying really hard tonight not to blur the lines between the high-density housing that's proposed in the business. I know that we're just talking about the business tonight. But I know that, we went back to the meeting notes from 2019 when it was discussed on the council that they couldn't imagine at that time for the proposal adding two hundred extra parking spaces. And for this entire proposal, there's over five hundred parking spaces crammed in this area for the coffee shop and the apartments. And so we did move this to this area because it is semi-rural. And I would like you to just give thought to the people that invested in the property because of that. And so it's really affecting us. Like, we're emailing each other at three in the morning, trying to figure out, okay, I've consulted with a real estate agent. We're trying to figure out how much property value we're going to lose if this goes in, or how it's going to affect, you know, sidewalks have to go in. After Twentieth was expanded, that would be our entire front yard. And so then, how, you know, do we put money into our house? Do we not? So these are the things and how this is affecting us indirectly. And then, one thing that you might not know either is that the bike groups in Oshkosh also leave from the Y. And so an increase in traffic is going to be detrimental to that. There's a lot of people that use this area for cycling. And so I just want to give you a little perspective on what we're seeing from traffic and our concerns about. They're saying it's a coffee shop, but really, we don't know. So that's what we're really concerned about here. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Hafmeister.
Hello, Karen Hafmeister, 3249 West Twentieth Ave. I did send an email to a few of you, Renee sent to the rest of you, so thank you for reading that. I'm not going to cover stuff that Renee did, but, you know, we're kind of confused on why the zoning might be approved already when we don't know the specific hours of operation of this proposed coffee shop. It kind of seems like you're putting the cart before the horse. If this is a coffee shop, what are the hours of operation? We don't know this. And we have enough noise in our neighborhood as it is now. And then, as Renee said, you know, this is going to be tacked on to this apartment complex, which is high-density. Another one of my concerns that we didn't even bring up at the Plan Commission meeting, I know you were there, and it occurred to me later, if there's going to be two hundred and eight apartments in this complex, and there's going to be a business with a drive-thru, traffic is already huge, and the Plan Commission did approve a traffic impact analysis before, I don't know, before the apartments get put in, I'm not sure. But if there's going to be two hundred and eight apartments in here, think of how many children might live in this complex. I just don't think a business with a drive-thru and children on bikes, rollerblades, skateboards, I just don't think that's a good mix. We're not opposed in our neighborhood to development, but this just doesn't seem like a good fit to have a drive-thru business in an apartment complex that might have a lot of children in it. That's one of my big concerns. And then, also just the traffic. You know, wouldn't the traffic impact analysis be done before the approval of the coffee shop, or to change the zoning to MR-12 PD? That just makes sense to me. Traffic is horrendous in our neighborhood as it is, and if you're going to have an apartment complex with over five hundred parking spots, and then a commercial business with a drive-thru, that is just going to really increase the traffic in our area. So I urge you to really think about denying the motion to change the zoning. As Renee stated, pedestrian-type areas that mix with apartments and businesses, I think that's a really great idea. But we're on the edge of town. Everybody that comes out to us has to come on either the city bus, which only runs every half hour, or drive a car. So it's really not conducive to, you know, the pedestrian thought that you brought up. It was such a good point. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for listening to our concerns.
Thank you.
Nancy Bonkert.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm Nancy Bonkert. I live at 3374 West Twentieth, so I am the property adjacent to the west on Twentieth Avenue. I am going to be annexed into the city as of March first, so, hi, folks. You know, I know that this is about the commercial use. We understand that. And basically, you know, it's a general plan development, a conceptual discussion about the high-density apartment buildings. We get all of that. And it was stated many times that it's a by right permitted use to plan ahead for those apartment buildings. We wouldn't be talking about the commercial coffee shop if we were not talking about apartment buildings. So I think that's why the neighbors keep bringing that up over and over again. You know, I'll reiterate everything that was said by my neighbors. Traffic, I live to the west, so by the time they get out to me, they're ten miles over what my neighbors are experiencing. And, you know, just since the last Plan Commission meeting, I paid attention. And honest to goodness, if they're going fifty-five, that would be a blessing. You know, they're shoveling that wet snow, they're just whizzing by. There would definitely have to be that traffic study that we talked about. Again, I think all of us, we understand development is going to happen. We understand. All of you have a tough job. You know, you're planning for our future, you're planning for these communities, but it's a tough area out there with all that traffic already. Again, the reason we're bringing up all this about the high-density apartments, that's the emphasis, high-density apartments, the wetlands area back there, the water redistribution, I know all of that has to be permitted. But you're really asking for trouble with all that blacktop area and all of that building space. You know, everyone knows about the school and the children, and the way it was presented to us, if the development hadn't already been pre-envisioned, it would not have been put in front of us like it was. Those kids and the school kids, and, you know, they're walking, the parents are in a hurry to get their kids to school. It's all of that. I have friends that said, you know, if there were more single-family condos like Chet Wiesenberg built in the area, they would not have moved to Appleton. Don't we want to welcome more of that to Oshkosh? Do we need just another high-density apartment building? Just things for you to consider. And certainly, by the time we get down the road, we would expect green space. Again, I know that you have the permitted right to use this land, and it's zoned multifamily, but just because there's the right, does that mean that we really want to go down this path? And are we planning for the future? Is it going to be another nice community on the west side of Oshkosh? You know, to attract people that will support our community, our altruistic causes, et cetera? Just all things to think about, because we wouldn't be here for that commercial if we were not here for a high-density apartment complex.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for all of your time and what you have to consider. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
There's no one else registered.
Okay. We'll bring this back to council then for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford.
And this is probably for Kelly, and I don't think I gave you a heads-up, but you saw this coming. Can you explain what the process is in terms of the zoning change, the general development plan later tonight, and then the SIP?
Absolutely. Tonight, you'll be considering a zoning change to add a PD overlay onto the property, which will give the property the ability to have a commercial use, a coffee shop. Now, as some of the speakers did mention, this is, high-density is allowed permitted by right. They would need a conditional use permit, but really, if they meet all of the requirements that we have, there's little we can do to, you know, reject the conditional use permit. So tonight will be the zone change and then the general development plan. So this is conceptual. So looking forward to the site implementation plan, the SIP, that is where we would really start to dig in a little bit deeper into the weeds to look at, you know, maybe the hours of the coffee shop and the traffic and the parking, and, you know, safe ways for the pedestrians to cross and those sort of things. So that's the next step of this process, and obviously, council has that right to, you know, not approve it at that level, too. So there is another step in the process where they'll be coming to Plan Commission and back to council.
Thanks, Kelly. And I share that just because for the crowd. At Plan Commission, I mean, the SIP is when a lot of the concerns you have tend to get discussed, and we have had things get rejected at that stage. I just want you to know that if these changes do pass here today, that's not the end of the road.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Kelly, how long has this been zoned multifamily out there?
It's been zoned since it came into the city, and I believe that was twenty, I have to see what year it is, but the early 2000s, maybe 2010 in that timeframe, is when it was zoned for high-density, when we even had our old zoning code before 2017.
So it's been zoned for over ten years?
Correct. Yes, yes.
Twenty years, twenty years, multifamily. So explain the old code to me versus the new code. Are they being allowed to get more density now or less density now?
I think it's like literally five units of less, five less units they're allowed by right.
Five, for the whole project or five per?
For the parcel, for how much square footage is in the parcel. That's how we come up with the density.
So the density has actually gone down, but it's always been zoned?
Slightly, yes.
Since it's been in the city, it's been zoned multifamily?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so is this where we talk about the traffic study, or is that later on?
Yeah, that would be the GDP. That's actually under the new resolution.
Is that 29, then? Is that?
Yes, that's the other.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate all your answers.
So this is just for the zone change to add the plan development overlay, which gives that flexibility. Okay. Any other council members? All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugerauer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, Resolution 2394, approve amendments to Chapter 30 zoning ordinance pertaining to implementation of the City of Oshkosh Housing Study and Needs. Do we have anyone registered on this?
We do not.
All right, back to council.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Just for a quick little reminder, we have several things that are in here with regard to our housing study. Ms. Nyforth, if you could just give a quick summary on that.
Sure, yeah. As part of the housing study that was adopted by council last year, staff took a look at some of our zoning code items and looked to see what we could potentially amend to allow additional housing options, looking at allowing, you know, smaller parcels, you know, to build smaller houses, changes with the parking code, looking at being able to utilize accessory dwelling units if you have, you know, the property that could handle it. So a lot of different options. So if folks are interested in exploring some of those on their property, I would recommend that they call the planning office.
All right, thank you very much. But that's pretty much throughout the city, though, correct?
Correct.
Given the other setbacks and that. All right, back to council. Please call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugerauer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Twenty-three ninety-five, create section four dash five point two, and amend sections four dash twenty-four, four dash twenty-five, and thirty dash eighty-seven, Chief of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code, all pertaining to the regulation of beer gardens. Is there anyone registered on this item?
There is not.
All right, back to council.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford.
I'll yield to.
Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor.
Appreciate it, thank you. A brief question, and this is probably more for either maybe the city attorney or definitely city manager rolloff. The one thing I don't want this to do, because this wasn't the intention, was to make it more difficult. This was to clean things up, make the process easier to understand, hopefully, make it, in some cases, streamlined, that they could, you know, could have a faster approval because it fits certain criteria. Confirm for me that, one, I remember I heard at last meeting, except for one instance, there is no fees, or at least not proposed currently. We might hope that there isn't at all at any point, but there was a temporary use permit. If they have to apply for one of those, there is one?
That already exists. So that would be, there are no new fees, no increases, no new fees at all as part of this.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Ford.
No, I.
Oh, you passed?
That was the same question.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think we talked about this, Mark, but the three that you can just come in and apply for, that doesn't keep them from applying for more than three. They can come to us individually. I mean, I don't want to use this as an example, but if they want to have twenty-five of them and we approve it, they could have twenty-five of them.
Everyone after three would go to council for approval, and that's under the temporary use permit.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think the fact- Yeah, and I think the fact that no one's here tonight is because we had a meeting with them last week. Uh, Ms. Lawrenson, uh, Ms. Balcom, and Chief Smith and I met with some representatives and answered a lot of questions, and there were still a lot of the same questions that were brought to you, and we explained very matter-of-factly how we're going to pretty much enforce it. But I think the idea, and I can assure you Deputy Mayor, that the intent was to, to make this more understandable and simplified, and I think their takeaway from that meeting was that it was, and that just helped. And I got a, I just got a call this afternoon to clarify some other issues about noise. The noise ordinance remains unchanged, so that was good for some people and maybe not good for others, but, uh, we explained that, and I think that's the similar types of calls that we've all been getting, uh, over the past couple of weeks since this was last discussed.
All right, well, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, we'll move to new resolutions. Resolution 2396, authorize staff to file water rate model with the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. Is there anyone registered to speak?
There is not.
Back to council.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, I see Mr. Abbey and Mr., um, Cameron, sorry, started to say Todd, I'm sorry. Mr. Abbey?
Mr. Cameron and I are just here to answer questions, uh, for council tonight.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I'll let, I'll, actually, I'll yield back to you, Mayor, I'll let you ask your questions, and then I'll chime in afterwards, so.
Okay, let's see here. Um, so as I understood the, the memo that staff prepared and in conjunction with Ellers, um, the lifeline rate re- structure, um, would, because of a certain number of households being in multifamily, which is under commercial, it does not necessarily, uh, make everyone equal, I guess, um, in, in the lifeline rate structure, but I, I will tell you, I had a little trouble following the five different blocks on some of the tables, but as I understand it, it would benefit, um, because we have two options here. We have the inclining rate, which is raising according to use, and the declining rate, which is our existing.
Right, so what we were asked to analyze as part of the, the rate case was, uh, one option, which would be to continue with the current, uh, rate structure that the city has in place, which is a declining block rate structure that is, uh, fairly common, uh, in the state of Wisconsin, and then to look at a, a second option, uh, specifically for the, the residential customer class, uh, to include the possibility of a, a lifeline rate. And what that would do under that option is move the residential customer class to an inclining block rate structure, meaning the more you use, uh, the more you pay, um, but it would start with a, uh, what's called a lifeline rate, which would be a, uh, very small amount of, uh, water usage, recognizing, uh, the amount of water to meet very basic needs, uh, with a user rate per 100 cubic feet, and then it inclines, uh, from there. So under that type of structure, uh, for the non-residential customer class, which does include multifamily in this situation, uh, they would continue to be on a declining block rate structure, uh, but the, uh, residential customer class would switch to, uh, the lifeline, uh, block rate structure with an inclining block rate.
I'll follow up with a second question after Councilmember Miller.
Go, go ahead, Mayor.
So it's my understanding, for example, there are other cities that are doing this inclining block rate, the more you use, the more you pay. For example, Waukesha. Obviously, not all cities are the same, have different issues and that, um, but they do have that inclining or that increasing cost per usage. Um, how do they do that? I, I don't know if you looked at Waukesha.
No, so I've got some familiarity with Waukesha. Um, theirs would be a little bit different in this situation, so they do not have a true lifeline rate. Um, they have an inclining block rate structure for their residential customer class with the goal of sending specific price signals to their residential users who have a greater ability to curb their water usage as they made, uh, their search and then ultimately are, are in the process of, of switching over to Lake Michigan water. So their need to switch to an inclining block rate structure was really driven by the fact that they needed their residential class, in this case, to conserve water, uh, while they made the move to, uh, Lake Michigan water, while they looked for another, you know, another water source. Uh, it's my understanding that even after they switched to Lake Michigan water, they're going to continue on that inclining block rate structure, I think that was part of their, uh, you know, Great Lakes Compact Diversion Request, uh, but that was their specific reason. In this case, what we were asked to analyze was the concept of, uh, a lifeline rate, which really would be a, a very basic usage block for, uh, lower usage, uh, customers, and then inclining from there. So you have to, you have to make a move to an inclining block rate structure, but it's, it's different than a situation like Waukesha where you're doing it for, you know, specifically to curb water usage. Here, you're doing it more for the, the lifeline, uh, rate structure itself.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I'd just like to take, take a minute and thank you for keeping, uh, this issue front and center. Um, I, I also had an interest in the lifeline rate. Unfortunately, the outcome looks like it's going to punish the, the same people that you were interested in helping, so, uh, I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, I, I didn't read it that way, but, um, as I understood it, uh, well, one of the things that I guess we didn't look at gran- really granularly is, um, how many of our households have, you know, just one or two out of our 27,000 or so dwelling units? But that's my understanding is that like if you had a larger household, because you're paying one water bill, that's where it kind of gets a little bit dicey and/or the folks who are in a full, a multifamily, because of the disallowance of applying this to those residential folks who happen to be commercial.
Yeah, there is kind of.
It creates, it, it creates that for that one segment of the population, and I don't know, Ms. Nyforth, if I could ask you, do you have a rough idea of how many of our 27,000 dwelling units might be, you know, a single person or one or two-person households? I'm sorry, I didn't ask you that earlier.
No, that's okay. I was actually just on, looking up on the census website just to see if there is anything. I would think that there's some information in there from the, you know, the community survey, probably that we could find. I just, I, I can't find it right now as far as how many.
I, I want to say, and this is just coincidentally, I was presented with some data from the fire department, um, yesterday, um, and I, I want to say it was, you know, somewhere in the 17% of our population that are in the, um, lower income category, but I didn't necessarily look at the number of units, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Ford?
Just a quick question, so if I read that correctly, we're not allowed to tie water rates to income?
Nope.
Household income or anything like that?
Correct.
So it's all about usage, so if you're a low-income family using a lot of water, that's how this could actually hurt you?
Yeah, there is certainly a break-even point between those two different scenarios as you, as you go from, um, kind of that average residential customer towards the higher end where the lifeline rate structure actually could work, could work against you in that, in that type of situation. So, you're right, I mean, really, when you look at water rates and setting water rates, the, the Public Service Commission really is the entity that we have to go through, through a, you know, a very prescribed, uh, process, but they follow, uh, the American Waterworks Association generally accepted rate-making practices, which really do follow the principle of cost causation, those who cause the cost, pay the cost, and we're really not allowed to deviate from that method, um, for, you know, at least at this point, for, for income, you know, base type, type, type user rates.
So there's nothing we could do as a body to tie it to income status?
Not at this point. Yeah, I know it's something, you know, if, if P S C eventually deviates from that and moves in that direction, it's certainly something that you could revisit again in a future rate case, but as of right now, um, you know, you really are adhered to those, those principles of, of, of rate making.
Thank you. There was a kangaroo.
That sounded like tiger. Um, uh, so, we could look at this in terms of a, a conservation of a resource that is finite and, um, address this as the more you use, the more you pay, um, but that wasn't the original direction, I understand, so it doesn't have to completely stop the conversation, um, given that, as I understand this, we're looking at 18% rate, and that does not include the Clearwell Project.
Correct.
And the base standard increase, as I understand it, was like, from the P S C, like 8%, so we're, um, I believe that's what I read recently, um, that you start with. Actually, it was an email that came from.
Sure.
From Ellers.
Yeah, so the, the P S C has two different, when you go in for, for a rate increase on the water side, you have two different ways you can do that. There's what's called a, a simplified rate increase, and then there's this conventional rate case. So historically, a simplified rate increase has always been tied to the, uh, rate of inflation. As long as I've been working in this industry, it's, it's been right around 3%. Last year, it was 4.5%, and P S C just came out just, uh, a few weeks ago with, uh, an 8% simplified increase. So if you were eligible, it would automatically take your rates up 8%. Anything in and above that, you have to go through a conventional rate case process, which is, you know, much more involved. There's a very prescribed rate application process that, uh, uh, we went through, and then it gets assigned to an auditor at the P S C, uh, for, uh, a, a great deal of, uh, further vetting, uh, in terms of the need for the increase.
Deputy Mayor?
Um, a question, and then a, well, two questions, I guess. One, I guess, I don't even, we never had the chance to have a discussion. We, I don't know what the original intent of was, of the request was. So I don't know if it was a conservation, uh, request, I don't know if it was a, trying to help low-income or low-users. Um, that's, that's part of my question for, who are we trying to help? Because I don't know who we're trying to help with, with this discussion. Two, we already have, by default, a, a small lifeline rate already built in, don't we, James? We don't bill for actual usage. If they use less than 50 cubic feet, they get billed for zero usage. Am I not correct?
I believe that is correct. Um, uh, utility accounting manager Gabrielson is up to help us with that answer, but I believe that is correct because of the rounding factors, but there are still base charges that are applied.
Correct.
Ken, was that correct?
That is correct. If it's less than, um, point five, you don't, you don't get billed anything.
Correct. So, so in the end, I mean, when we're talking about the financial part of this to a, to a, either a low-usage use, um, water user in the City of Oshkosh, the only part where we taught, we would be talking about is the actual water that they use, because everything else, all the surcharges, you know, the, the service, service charge to actually have a meter, fire service charge, um, for sewer, the, you know, the flat rate things are going to be there.
Correct.
Okay, so the ones who do use very little water are receiving a benefit right now. So we have a, we have a, a small one built in by default.
And, and realistically, you know, that applies to any billing unit. If you use 1.49 billing units, you get charged for one. You know, the same way if you used 0.49 billing units, you get charged for zero. Conversely, if you use 1.5 billing units, you get charged for two.
Thank you.
And I think that was, yeah, that was part of the discussion, too, was that when you are at that rounding point, that you, you are actually paying more for a different or a lower amount. Yeah. Um, and we're talking about cubic feet.
The billing unit is 100 cubic feet.
I'm sorry.
The billing unit is 100 cubic feet.
Right, right, and, and so sometimes that's confusing for folks, too, that we, we measure in cubic feet, not, not the gallons, you have to do the equation and that, but, um, all right. Uh, Councilmember Ford?
Is there somebody else?
No, that was.
I was cooking them.
Are we done with the lifeline discussion? I'd like to talk about the size of the increase in general.
Yeah, let's, yes.
That's all right? Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what caught my eye, and I think caught a lot of residents' eyes, was the 18% increase, and, and just for fun, I'm a fun guy, uh, I was looking at some comparables, and I think it's worth pointing out, we're, we're above average here in Oshkosh, people complain about that. At least what I saw, the numbers from, I think, 2020, were higher than Appleton, uh, were lower than Fond du Lac, were a lot higher than Wasaw, but it, it varies a lot. And, and I bring that up, and I can give all kinds of comparisons here, but I do want to at least point out that 18% is significant. And I think it's another example of where we really need to change the way we think and talk about the fiscal burden we place on our residents here in Oshkosh, whether it's utility rates, special assessments, property tax, these things all matter individually, but they matter a heck of a lot more collectively. So every time at budget time, we make a decision to fund a position using utility rates, I know that even I, my eyes light up, I'm like, oh, great, it's off the tax levy, but it's still a financial burden. All of these things are interconnected. Um, we're going to see future impacts for the decisions we already made on, on the Clearwell. And it's interesting, I can tell you, and maybe my colleagues can share with this with me, too, but I got complaints from the same people that were upset about the Clearwell, complaining about the water utility rates, and it's like, we're not telling our story, that these things are all, are all connected. So that's a long way of saying, you know, water's like brakes on a car, obviously going to support this, this rate increase because it's vital, uh, but I also plan to be a little bit of a pain, um, during our next budget session, to, to really try to get us thinking holistically about the fiscal burden we're placing on our residents, um, next year. So, thank you.
And, uh, I'll just quickly mention, and then Council Miller, uh, would like to say something, that, uh, for folks who are facing shut-off or delinquencies, there is, uh, Wisconsin, um, low-income household restoration for disconnected water services, and to help with arrears, it's called wisconsinewater.help. Go ahead, Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I want to echo what, what Mike said a little bit, too. Everybody up here is disgusted with, with this. I mean, it's, it, it's 18% increase, and, uh, I have three daughters, so I, I know what water rates are, but, uh, um, and, and just to go back to Mike's conversation a little bit, w- when you look at the averages, it's different. It, it, it's difficult to look at averaging if, if you're comparing us with other communities, because it depends on where they're at, what stage of their rate case they're at, um, things like that. So I mean, we're going to be penalized quite a bit this year because of our 18% comparison compared to other communities until they go through their rate case process. I, is that accurate? I mean.
Well, I think one of the things to point out is, you know, it's been five years since we've had an increase.
Agreed.
And as Mr. Cameron just said, if we had been doing simplified, uh, cases on an annual basis, you know, that 3% annual would have gotten us exactly to the point that we're at right now.
Nice, nice segue, James, so.
Unfortunately, we're holding off due to the Clearwell Project, and it got to the point where Public Service Commission said to us, knock it off, you can't hold off anymore.
Right, and, and, and some of that was driven by the D N R as well, but, um, I, for, for everybody at home to oversimplify this, some of these decisions are out of our hands. Well, when, when we fill out, when we do a rate case, we're asked very specific information, right? Uh, X dollars, right down to the penny, they determine the rate based on the information that we give them. The information that we give them is all factually based. Is, is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay, so, a- again, that doesn't help the pain for everybody at home, but 18% is a big kick in the fanny, and what I would ask staff to do is, once we get through the Clearwell process, if, if we could do simple rate cases on an annual basis, so somebody who's already stretched doesn't get an 18% kick because we haven't done it for five years. Does, does that make sense to everybody? Is, is that a reasonable request?
It's a very reasonable request. Uh, councils have made that request in the past, and up until 2018, we were pretty regularly doing that. Um, the Clearwell thing just kind of slowed things down, and then, uh, P S C, as James said, said.
Nope.
We're done, but we should be doing that on a more regular basis to, um, to, to keep it, uh, moderate, um, but then also keeping a close eye on the annual decisions, because
But then also keeping a close eye on the annual decisions, because the annual decisions build up to, to these types of things.
And, and to my colleague's point, collectively, this, this is brutal. You throw in stormwater, you, you throw in, you know, real estate tax increases and everything, these numbers collectively matter. They, they matter a lot. And I, I think everybody here on the council is committed to looking at this globally. So, thank you.
All right, so initially, just to be clear here, both rate structures would meet the PSC requirements, and they're asking for the city to make the determination which one we're going with. Staff is recommending the proposed rate structure continue as is currently declining black rate, so the more you use, the less you pay. So, just to be clear. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. James, I did want to give you a chance, excuse me, Mr. Robby, I want to give you a chance to, to at least explain to those at home, you know, I know, I know how we got to 18%. We haven't done it in a while, but how did we get to 18%? What's driving, you know, what are our cost increases that are driving that? Is there regulatory things that are coming, that are pushing us that way? Is it, you know, supply chain? Is it labor? I'm pretty sure the answer is all of those.
I was going to say, the short answer is yes.
Yes.
Unfortunately.
Teeing you up here.
I think, especially in the past 18 months, chemical costs have been a huge driver. We have seen the chemical supply change their, the way they view governmental entities, and they treat us now the same as everyone else, so we're paying commodity rates. For example, you know, both water and wastewater utilize chlorine in the disinfection process. We've seen the rates that we pay for chlorine more than quadruple in the last 16 months. Several other of our chemicals have seen significant increases in costs as well. And that's, you know, due to the challenge of trying to treat, you know, Lake Winnebago water. You know, it's, it's not an easy source body to treat, but it's a lot easier to treat than if we were a groundwater system. So it is very challenging, it's very seasonal in its challenges, certainly in August, July, August, and September, it's a very different treatment requirement than it is at this time of year. So that is one of the biggest things. Regulatory is absolutely another one. Earlier this evening, you know, on the consent agenda, there was a communication campaign for our lead service replacement. That is all being driven by changes in the regulations at the federal level, requiring us to have a complete database with public-facing dashboard of all residential water services in the community. And we're having a hard time getting residents to accept the fact that we do have to come in and do these inspections. Unfortunately, the regulatory agencies and the DNR and the Public Service Commission say to us, you've got the authority to shut them off, that's all you need. If they don't want to comply, shut them off. That's not the stance we want to take. That's why we have such an aggressive information education campaign that you approved earlier in this agenda. You know, as we talk about emerging contaminants, PFOS, cyanotoxins, blue-green algae, those are all a number of things that are continuing to drive treatments and operation and maintenance costs. To the point that, quite honestly, John, you look at the numbers a lot more detail, the personnel costs really don't affect our rates, it's everything else.
And I appreciate you, you being that blunt and that specific with, with us and with the people at home that are listening, because, said it for a while, we don't do a good enough job telling our story. We've talked about that numerous times and in numerous ways, and I can, I think I can easily say, there's not a single person up here that enjoys anything increasing 18%. But it's important to say why. And in this case, you know, there are things that are out of our control. This isn't because we're giving, you know, outlandish and lavish, you know, upgrades to, to vehicles and to payroll costs and, and this type of stuff. This is to make sure that we are providing safe, clean, reliable drinking water to anybody who turns a tap on, and it costs money. I don't like 18%, but I also know that a gallon of water, for us to, to, to supply that to a household, one single gallon is pretty inexpensive. And making sure it's clean, safe, and reliable is, if it's not number one for us up here to be doing, it's number two, you know, in terms of public safety and public health. So, it's not fun to vote yes, but it has to happen. So I appreciate you guys being, being up here and sharing the information with us.
Any other discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Present.
Carried five.
All right, 2397, approve general development plan for a mixed multifamily residential commercial development on the north side of West 20th Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Do we have anyone registered to speak?
We did not.
Okay. Back to council for discussion. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess I have some, I, I don't have some, I have a real problem with, with, with this traffic study being attached to this request. I, I think we're going down a slippery slope here. We don't, Kelly, jump in here if I'm wrong, but we don't request a traffic study from people that request this type of rezoning, is, is that accurate?
No, we do request traffic impact analysis if their, you know, staff does perceive that there could be an impact in the area with additional, you know, traffic that might impact, you know, the traffic functioning properly and safely.
I get the real feeling that, that this is being weaponized, that this traffic study is being weaponized to slow down this process out here. I, I think this is all about multifamily, I think it has nothing to do with a traffic study. And some of the emails that I got from some of the NIMBYs out here were absolutely appalling, very racist. I, I am very angered over this. It, it's, it's just ridiculous. This property's been zoned this way for two decades, so I, I know if I build a new home, I'm going to want to know that a manure plant can't be built next to me, but these people have had 15 or 20 years to know that this is multifamily. Some people's comments tonight about the danger of a drive-through, the YMCA picks up probably 500 kids a day. It's a drive-through. I mean, the YMCA is, is a drive-through, and there are more kids pulling out of there. The school is a drive-through. You're, you're picking up kids, you know, nobody's going 30 miles an hour through a drive-through. So I, I, I really think some of these things are absurd. I, I'd like to offer up an amendment that we, that we eliminate the traffic study as, as part of this.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Discussion on the amendment. Deputy Mayor.
Can I ask, and I hate to do this, I did not give my fellow colleague a heads-up. I'm not on Plan Commission, I watched it, I, I read the notes, Mr. Ford's on there. The intent of the ad of the traffic impact analysis, was the intent of it to gauge honestly what the commercial function of the PD was going to do, or was it to impact, to, to analyze the impact of this residential development by itself?
Both.
Okay.
Both. That was certainly the discussion there, was the, you know, the concerns the residents brought up about increased traffic. I think the, the Plan Commission wanted to understand what they were. I will say, and this is, I'll, I'll segue this into a question, I don't think that, there wasn't discussion at Plan Commission about what the cost of it is. I don't think it was articulated that it would pass on to the developer, as opposed to it being a city cost, and that's probably my ignorance, I tried to ask that question. So I'd love to hear from, from city staff, you know, what would this cost, who's paying for it, and do you expect to find anything beyond the fact there's a lot of traffic on 20th Street? Because I think that's more important.
I can, I can answer the cost. I know that the traffic studies that we've done recently, probably 15 to $20,000. As far as traffic in that area, I can tell you that there have been three traffic studies done in the last 15 years there, mostly related to Trager. There was one done this last year, which was specific to Trager, and the traffic that, for students and parents dropping off and picking up at the school. Previous to that, about five years ago, the school district hired a consultant that did a traffic impact analysis that was more of that whole area, basically from Oakwood to Clearville, and then there was one previous to that. But I know during those studies, they haven't, other than the traffic entering and exiting the school, there really hasn't been any traffic concerns identified. So, I know I've studied that area quite a bit, and that's what I've observed as well. As far as whether a traffic impact analysis would be needed out there, I can tell you, I personally don't think it's going to show that this development's going to cause traffic issues. However, you know, from what I understand, we're talking about a local, if we're talking about a Starbucks, that would be one thing, right? I mean, that might generate some significant traffic, but from what I understand, it's more of a neighborhood, small, local coffee shop that's probably not going to generate a ton of traffic. So, I would say personally, I don't think that that's going to show anything that's going to be negative to the development, or suggests that it's going to create traffic issues. And then just one other thing, because I know that speed's been mentioned a few times, right now it is, that area's transitioning from more of a four-lane rural area to it's getting more developed, which generally would slow traffic down as more traffic would get out there. It is county highway, so the speed limit's not under our jurisdiction. However, as things develop and change, maybe that's something the county highway commissioner would be willing to look at.
Can, can someone tell us who's going to, who would pay for the study? And I ask this because I know that the, and again, I speak as one member of the Plan Commission, but the intent was not to pass on a new cost to the developer, but it sounds like that may have been what has happened.
It's very common that the developer pays for it, and if, and usually, the purpose of a study such as this is what mitigation initiatives can get done to address whatever might be there. And the best example I can use, even though it's not a great example, is when the QuickTrip was developed over there on Washburn near
Westtown.
Westtown, thank you, Kelly. It, it was paid for by QuickTrip, and the signal that was deemed appropriate there was also funded by QuickTrip because of the impact that they themselves put on that. As Mr. Collins said, I don't think that this development would trip any trigger for that type of need out there. And we could certainly, as we get closer to the SIP, as, as Nyforth pointed out, you know, maybe there's a decel lane that might, a deceleration lane that might be necessary, but not necessarily. It's, that's probably the most you'd probably get, and I think Jim, in his experience, and, and Kelly, and, and myself, we probably wouldn't trigger anything that level anyway. And with all the other studies that have been done because of Trager, that's probably a bigger, you know, all, think of all the single-family homes that have been developed in the last few years, those are probably going to cause a greater impact on the area than, than the multifamily themselves. Our experience is that these developments, think of the ones over on West Haven, just south of Aurora, they don't have a lot of children in there. It doesn't generate that. It generates pretty much working adults. So, that's where the traffic impact will be. That's sort of a, you know, off-the-cuff traffic analysis, but I think from our experience, that's generally what you would find.
Well, you dodged my specific question. Who's, who's paying for it?
Oh, I said it straight up. Right now, the developer.
Okay.
And I would stick to that.
That's all I needed to know.
I would stick to that. Oh, yeah, I said it right at the beginning, but then I got in my tie ring.
That's okay. It was passionate. It was impressive. Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just, just a follow-up statement, I, I think everybody knows how I feel about this, but I, I field a lot of calls, questions, anger from developers, and they always say how difficult it is to do business in Oshkosh. I don't think we need to give developers and people that are investing in our community another roadblock to, to, to doing business here. So, I, I just think it, it seems very burdensome, and I think in this, in this instance, it's being used punitively, which I, I can't even use the words right now. But I, I just want everybody to think about that when, when we're talking to other developers and, and we talk about challenges to building in Oshkosh, we don't need to throw up another roadblock, so, thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
I feel compelled to, I realized the other day, I think I'm the second longest-serving Plan Commission. I don't know how these things happen, right? I read an article about the difference between how old you think you are, and how old people see. I think I have that problem going on. But no, the, I, I can assure you that the intent of the Plan Commission was never to place an additional burden on the developer. That communication was certainly never, was never expressed, and that was, again, that was probably in us for not asking about it. But at the same time, the, the designee for the developer did not object to the traffic study, and it may have been because it wasn't the developer themselves, but someone who was there representing them. So I want to, I want to put that in there as well.
Sure.
I think it's important that, to not, to not, I don't think it was punitive at all, in the Plan Commission there. I think there was legitimate concerns about the impact of traffic, and I think that those concerns have been heard, and I appreciate the response from Director Collins and City Manager Roloff.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
All right, and just want to thank Councilmember Miller for his motion, and so we're on the motion to amend. If anyone has anything further, speak now. Otherwise, let's call the roll on the amendment.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
So having removed that base standard modification, no, not base standard modification, the addition of the traffic impact analysis, we'll come back to the amended resolution.
Okay, as amended.
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, we will move then on to 2398, approve allocation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to Oshkosh Kids Foundation Tiny Homes Project. Is there anyone registered to speak on this item? I see one of the representatives here.
I'm here, I neglected to register.
For questions? Did you wish to speak?
I didn't have anything prepared, but I
You're welcome to, or we can discuss without, it's up to you.
I'll go up here if you have any questions.
Okay, sounds good. Council motion and a second, please. So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion on the approve, approval of the allocation for the ARPA dollars for this project. Councilmember Ford.
Sorry, I feel like I'm talking a lot. I know throughout this process, I've, I've, I've tried to articulate over and over again the importance of our ARPA allocation in the area of homelessness being part of a cohesive strategy. I very much appreciate the, the outreach from the folks at Tiny Homes. They did answer all my questions, they did send the email out explaining how, you know, where they fit in among other organizations in Oshkosh, and what needs they're able to meet, and where other needs still exist. And I just want to reiterate again my, my challenge to the city manager as part of our goals here, that it's really important, I think, for our ARPA funding to have, it's going to have a long-lasting impact. We can't be thinking along the lines of we're funding organizations, we're funding projects, we have to be funding a strategy. So I really look forward to, to hearing more about that, that cohesive strategy.
And we are discussing an allocation of $225,000, as I see on the staff memo. Is there any other discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Been a huge supporter of the project since, since the beginning. I, I love the concept, I love the idea. It's exciting to hear that you've placed your first families already in some of the first completed units, and that's fantastic. It's unique, and I know it's, it's poised to be hopefully replicated, you know, many other places. It's a good thing, and I'm, and I'm thankful you guys are, are trying at Oshkosh. In terms of the request, I am fully supportive of, of putting dollars at this, but my question is, is the timing of it. We have not, we have not received all the other requests that were, that were brought in through this process. We've, we've allocated, I think, or authorized five, six grants, I think, up to this point. And as much as I love the project, they received a large sum of money through the government already, through Winnebago County, from the state of Wisconsin, towards the project. And I think that means something to me, that they've gotten a shot at, you know, a, a large chunk of money that other organizations haven't gotten a chance at yet, and that we haven't gone through our full process to give those other entities a, a shake at the well, you know, a, a chance at it. And I just don't know where City Manager Roloff is in those presentations, or those, those, those requests, or those grants. And if we're, if we're nearing an end, that, you know, there may be some funds available, I'm cool with that. I'm good. Uh, and that would change my perspective a bit. Um, if there's a ton that you plan on bringing to us to make some decisions on, I'd like to hold off on this one to, to allow some others that haven't had a chance to, to receive some of that, that government funding for their programs. Um, I don't know if you have any thoughts on, on, on my comments, but, um, that's kind of where I'm at, just in terms of the, this fairness part of, of this process and making sure that we've had a chance to say, and it's okay if we tell people no, or groups no, but that we've told them, you know, no if they're not getting something.
Yeah, I have not, um, since I presented some projects to you back in September, I haven't taken a strong look at many of the other projects. The, from a strength standpoint, we're nearly as strong, but I haven't revisited them lately, so I think I owe it to you to take a look at that. Um, the amounts are much less than the ones that have been brought forward to you. So these, these are the lion's share, and this, uh, should you, council approve this, we're still only up to about 55% of the 5.1 million. So we've got about 2.3 million, assuming this one gets approved. Um, I don't anticipate being as much, but I can't answer straight up, this is exactly what it is. Um, and, and I can certainly revisit that and, and provide you a report, but it won't be nearly as much as the amounts that we've been seeing that you've already approved.
Thank you.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I'm, I'm okay with, with postponing this until Matt gets fiscally okay with this. I, I do have some new information. Um, I, I think Mark and I talked and you thumbnailled it for me. I mean, you, you got me in a ballpark, but, but I think it's fair if Matt wants some more specifics on that. I, I mean, I think to quote you, you said you're keeping some powder dry, so, um, and to me, you're, that, that's good enough for me, so. But, uh, I've got no problem postponing this two weeks, uh, for you to get comfortable with the numbers, Matt. Um, this, this is something I, I feel strongly about and I will be supporting as long as we're okay with this fiscally.
I'm happy that, that's up to council.
Other council questions? Councilmember Ford.
And City Manager Roloff, is two weeks long enough for you to, one, do you have a, I feel like you have a little grasp on what the deputy mayor's asking.
Yeah.
Two, is it enough time?
I, I feel very comfortable, because I, I pull that file out periodically, so it won't, I know exactly where it's at. It won't take long to, to dust that off and, uh, and give you a rough idea of where I think we might land. Um, as, as Councilmember Miller said, I think it's very important for us to keep a little bit of our powder dry, even though we have to commit these funds by the end of 2024, and that's a lot faster than we all think it will be. Um, and there might be some issues that come up. I mean, for example, the smallest one we've given out so far is to advocate for the eviction prevention program. Um, I have not finalized your agreement, so they haven't even gotten the money yet. So they may, you know, that could open up. I think the discussion that you've asked about a cohesive strategy on homelessness, um, you know, the county had talked about bringing that together, and I said, we want to be part of that. I didn't think I necessarily needed to convene it, but certainly be at the table. That hasn't been done yet, and there might be some other issues related to homelessness. There are a handful of other projects that maybe could be arguable to be homeless, homelessness prevention type of thing, but there are other ones that are in there too that I think are, that, that may be worthy of, of bringing forward to you that aren't specifically about homelessness, but maybe something you may want to take a look at.
Can I ask really quickly, the, the representative from Tiny Homes, I mean, is this, would this jam you up, that's a very sophisticated term, uh, by waiting two weeks? I want to make sure that your, your schedule, your project's not being compromised by, by us waiting.
The two weeks isn't going to change the project, so, you know, I get where folks are coming from, just wanting to kind of understand the spend for the city. You know, at the same time, we applied, I don't know, 18 to 20 months ago, you know, so it's been an extensive period of time. You know, we received approval from the county a year ago. We still haven't seen a penny yet from those funds, so, um, and part of the reason for the request is that we initially applied to city and county, and there were two separate requests, one from each, and there was some misunderstanding on how the application went to the state, so we didn't move, or we didn't increase the amount to the county that we requested, that we initially applied, uh, from the city, uh, as things got applied to the state level. So some of it's just trying to kind of get to what we initially applied for.
Okay.
And this, again, none of it's for operating costs, it's just for some site work that's a little harder for me to go out and fundraise, you know, people digging a hole and building a retention pot, so.
My apologies.
Counsel.
Could I just have your, your name in-
I'm sorry.
For the-
Will Deppiase, D-E-P-P-I-E-S-S-E.
I just wanted to make a quick little, um, statement here, and then Councilmember Wojciechowski. Um, in our short-term goals that staff identified, and as we spoke about this, you know, we specifically said that, um, we wanted to give, you know, credit to the ability to leverage ARPA funds with other revenue sources. Our next bullet point on that says avoiding duplication of effort with other agency or duplication of ARPA funds. And, and that is exactly what they did here. They, they did the, they wanted to leverage this, and that's why there were two, as I understand it, two applications, one with the city, one with the county. So they were doing what we asked in that regard. So, um, I will be supporting this. Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Yeah, I guess I see where the, the request comes from, but they, this is no different than other requests that have come before us process-wise. Is that accurate? I mean-
Yeah, I would say yes, because, as Mr. Deppiase pointed out, um, there was a misunderstanding on my part. So I fully admit that, that, that the funds from the county were duplicate. They were in fact not duplicate. So once I realized that, I was like, okay, then I think we need to move this forward. And, um, so that's why, that's why I brought it forward after I had that clarification.
Yeah.
And that's why, um, Ms. Dumke wrote the letter, she did, and I think she reached out to some council members.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't know. I feel as though keeping consistent with how we've been approving these other ones. Um, I'm comfortable approving it now. Obviously, if others don't feel that way, that's okay, but, you know, I think, you know, it follows the direction we've given you on how to approach this process and how to bring these proposals to us. Um, so I, I, we're voting to support. We voted now, but, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Hall Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, we are-
Madam Mayor, I will add to my outstanding issues, but I believe it'll be resolved at the next meeting. I think I'm in a position to be able to answer Deputy Mayor Mugrower's question, and I think that's a fair thing, you know, where we are kind of at the halfway point of the spending, the-
Will, congratulations.
So I'll have that, I'll have that for you.
Cool.
Thank you. Well, we're at council discussion and direction to city manager and future agenda items. Um, I guess my question under future agenda items is, um, and, and maybe this can be discussed at the next item for council member announcements, it's name is, but is there, uh, going to be a review of the board and commission with that subcommittee? What, what, what are the timelines? Would that be a future agenda item coming up here in the next month or so, or what did you guys come up with?
Uh, we're still meeting with all of the staff liaisons for boards and commissions, which we should be wrapping that up within the next couple of weeks. Um, and I think, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, expect a report in April.
I, I think that's our goal, is to have something by, by the end of April for everybody, so, um, it, it's pretty interesting, so.
All right. Uh, do we have any future workshops? Deputy Mayor?
Actually, if, just a, whether it's an agenda item or a, a direction to city manager or a question. After the, last council meeting, we approved some, um, we had actually approved, and then we, we actually pulled it out, the street lighting for along Bauman, where we were going to do some sidewalks. And I had a question for, for, for City Manager Roloff and Transportation Director Collins. Um, and I just, I don't know where we're at and where, where we sit on this, but I'm wondering if, when was the last time the city looked at whether it's even financially responsible for us to be putting in our own, uh, infrastructure for street lighting when we have a, a WPS or we energies as a contractor? You know, is there, you know, when was the last time it was reviewed and, and is it actually financially responsible to be doing that? There's a lot of infrastructure that goes in upfront, so that drives up our project costs, which we keep talking about trying to keep our project costs low. Um, and so I was just wondering, um, we chatted, City Manager Roloff, I had chatted on the topic at least, and I'm just wondering.
We have not done a single analysis in the 15 years I've been with the city. Um, anecdotally, I think, you know, Mr. Kussman, Scooter, who, you know, is our electrician, uh, can anecdotally tell you that it's less expensive, but we have not done an analysis, and I am not opposed to it. Uh, and I'm a little embarrassed that you had to ask before. I said, maybe we ought to take a look at this just to demonstrate. We can certainly do that, and Jim and I have talked about that. Is Jim still here? Oh, Jim, Jim took off when he got the other stuff. Um, so I think, you know, and Jim and I have talked about this, and I think it, it's worthy of a, an analysis. Um, and because, in the case of Bauman, because we're not doing that area, we're not doing the lights, because then it would be much more expensive to do it. Um, and we were trying to avoid those costs, so we're not going to dig up an area that doesn't need to be dug up. So, but I'm certainly willing to do that because it's been at least 15 years since the analysis has been done. It's probably, I bet it's been 30.
No, I just appreciate it. I know costs have gotten, you know, quite high on some of those raw materials, and just was wondering, you know, where that, uh, the cost benefit landed on those, so I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
And then we have, uh, something on here about graffiti ordinance. I think this is a follow-up discussion.
Yes, so we have, uh, Ms. Lawrenson and Ms. Nyforth, uh, prepared a report on graffiti remediation. I think they did a very thorough job of doing some surveying. Um, and staff does not believe that we want to go and amend our ordinance unless council feels strongly that either, A, we need to be more restrictive than most other communities, or B, we want to fund it ourselves. And I, I'm not in a position to recommend either of those, but, and I'm, I'm sure that Ms. Nyforth and Ms. Lawrenson can give you some depth to their analysis, but I think I summed it up for them. But they're, they're the ones who conducted the analysis, and I thought they did a really good job. Kenosha's the only one that, um, pays for it, right? That they actually pay for them, or, or have a, I'm sorry.
I thought there was another one. Is it Madison?
Yeah.
They have a co-pay program. They don't fund it completely. But unless you're willing-
West Alice hired a graffiti abatement specialist. So there are, I, the bottom line is, the city of Oshkosh is pretty much right with most of the other cities. There are a few other cities who are taking some more expansive approaches to it. Some of them are funding, like, abatement specialists or providing grants. Um, there's a, Milwaukee provides additional information, but not actually money or, um, people to do, to do the, the work for, for people. Our question was, you know, where council wanted to go with this. Right now, we're pretty much in the mix with most cities. The additional options are going to, you know, potentially require some funding that we did not identify a source for at this point. So it's, it's just a question of what direction you would like us to take next.
So I have a, a question, and maybe this got answered and I didn't catch it previously. So if a, I don't know, either a resident or a business owner, um, you know, experiences some kind of, um, you know, vandalism of this nature on their building, doesn't their insurance cover that? I mean, depending on their, their coverage?
Their deductible's probably so high that a bucket of paint's cheaper than the deductible.
Oh, Councilmember Ford, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
We get decent compliance, I'd say.
Yeah. I'll give, I respectfully disagree. You probably know that, um, with, with what you all just said. Um, a couple of things I want to point out. And maybe it's more, maybe it's more just, uh, you know, thinking of constituent services, right? The 13 communities you presented to us, yeah, 10 have the identical language to us. Um, I'd say those 10 communities don't all have a situation where they're getting, I mean, I'm not lying here, probably a dozen community, uh, community contacts from folks that don't agree on any other thing politically, uh, but they can agree that it's a fundamental problem when there's a piece of graffiti on their property, that they look at the city ordinance and the direction there is basically empowering them to put more graffiti over it. So I don't see this as, as us funding a massive project. I don't see this, us as providing labor to have to, to up, you know, to mitigate the stuff. I see us as providing some clear direction. You know, we want you to do your best to mitigate the graffiti in a way that matches the texture and color of the surface. I don't think that that's an extreme thing, and I think we can really overthink this, and I get it. I mean, you're doing your jobs, but I-
I think that the concern that we had is, the remedy is, if they don't do that, we would fine them. So you have somebody who is already the victim of vandalism or graffiti, and then we're put in a position where if they've just painted it over and it doesn't match, we are issuing them a citation on top of it. And that's an uncomfortable position.
I understand that. I understand that. And maybe this is a more esoteric question, but why have a graffiti ordinance at all if we're just allowed to do whatever we want to cover it up? It's just not giving our residents clear direction. It's a communication problem in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I just don't experience the, the level of non-compliance. I think we get pretty good compliance, um, given the numbers we have. And we're, we're fortunate that we don't have the problems that West Alice and Kenosha have. It's, we, we haven't risen to that level, but, um, there are some people who, you know, they'll look for a bucket of paint in their, in their basement to go cover over what they have. Some of it sadly is, there are some people that are repeat victims and others who never experience at all. So you get it once, you might be okay doing it, but if you get a repeat, it's like, they send the message that we don't want this and we're not going to tolerate it, but, um, we haven't seen that, we haven't gotten complaints that, that the residents or the businesses, it's mostly businesses, um, have not been doing anything of a, such a nature that we need to do additional enforcement. So that's just our experience with what we've dealt with so far.
And if we do get a complaint, I think that typically staff has reached out and said, you know, we understand you covered it, but there's some concerns about it can, you know, the graffiti can still be seen, or whatever the concern is, and we try to work with them cooperatively.
Yeah.
It's taking that next step and citing people. That is something we wanted direction from council to do.
Well, shut up. You got my, well, you got my preference, but I'm one of seven here.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Yeah, I just, I, I get where that's coming from, and, and I guess if they're required, so they're required, requires a removal and covering of graffiti, but it doesn't, it basically right now as it is, is it doesn't specify how they can, how they're supposed to remove or cover it up. Is that, is that basically where it stands right now? And, yeah, and I guess, I understand having that consistency. I feel like it also is nice to give them the freedom of how they choose to cover up the graffiti, because regardless whether we give them direction, you know, that doesn't stop the root problem, which is people graffitiing in the first place.
That's true.
And in my mind, it just puts the onus then, more, more responsibility on the person who's already been victim to that. Um, maybe it's more so just suggestions that we could add or like recommendations. Um, you know, I think the idea is that we want it to be aesthetically pleasing, um, not, you know, completely different, but then at the same time, you know, it, it's their, it, it should be their discretion with how they want it to look. I don't know. So I understand what's coming from. I don't, I don't know if there's an immediate necessary remedy that needs to happen to this.
I think we could get an artistic, yeah, 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 I think discretion here.
I think they're looking for some direction.
Yeah.
Councilmember Miller.
I think a subtle way to put this is, let's kick this back to staff and come up with something a little better.
So I, I have to say, I only got a few calls or emails on this particular one, so maybe other council members had more contact with folks than I did. How, how many instances in the last year or so are we talking about?
I think we had about 70.
Since 2020, I think in 2022, we had roughly upper 20s, lower 30s.
Is that increasing or decreasing, or about the same?
It was going up a little bit in 2022 compared to the previous two years.
And then most of those are covered and not a further issue. There were a couple that I'm aware of where we made, you know, re, re-contacts and said, hey, you know, you covered it, but it's still visible or, you know, whatever. And I think most of those were dealt with on the second contact. I'm not-
Yeah, typically we get, see, click fix.
Okay. Okay.
Reminders, or folks then, you know, say, hey, they didn't do a good job covering it up. So we work with police, the police department typically on that.
Councilmember Wojciechowski?
The complaints that come in, are these typically like, does it have to do with the graffiti itself, like the act of that happening? Or is it just, is it frustration when not having any direction on how to cover it up or approach to take? Like, do you know, is there a way to differentiate that? You know, like, what is?
I'm not sure. But, so, most of the complaints that come in, it's like, this property has graffiti. So we contact the property owner and say, you know, we've been notified, your property has graffiti on it. They, you need to cover it. Most of them will cover it. We've had a few where it's covered, but you can read through it, or you can, we had one that it was a racist symbol, and you, they covered it, but you could clearly see it was still the symbol of, you know, there. So we would follow up then and explain, you know, please do better. And most of the time, we get compliance with it. There are some cases where, I mean, you could have a wall that had graffiti on it, and they just paint a box around it and cover it that way. And people don't like the look of a box on the wall, but it's covered the graffiti.
And that's their choice.
That's where we don't have anything that actually addresses that at this point. Now, you could also do that without any graffiti on your house, and we don't have anything that addresses that either.
Thanks for bringing that up.
All right. So you want to know if we want to clarify this?
Correct.
Councilmember Erickson?
I'll just say, I'm, I think I'm good with how it is currently, knowing that, I think I prefer when it's not a punitive, creating some extra burden on, on folks who have gone through this. So, and I appreciate the work that staff has done to work with property owners that are going through this and just, yeah, working with them. I'm good with as-is.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. No, I'll just say I agree with Councilmember Erickson, and she said it perfectly, so I think as-is is just fine.
What I would say is, as, if circumstances change, I think we may need, you know, that might need to bring it back. We're not, we're not in the situation that West Alice is in. If we went, if we were getting into a problem area, I'd say we want to revisit it. And so we'll, we'll keep an eye on it and keep doing what we're doing to encourage people. They're not completely obliterating, which is a term we've heard a lot. They're not obliterating it. We're going to, we're going to keep saying things and work with, work with the businesses as need be. So thank you. Appreciate, appreciate that.
Thank you for the work.
Feedback.
All right, we are at council member announcements and statements. Are there any reports for boards and commissions? Councilmember Erickson, and then Wojciechowski?
Thanks. I just have a quick report out from Transit Advisory Board, met, met earlier this month. I don't even know what week it is anymore, but we did have, we met at the Downtown Transit Center, had a tour of the new driver comfort station and the renovated platform. So just a shout out to staff. I think the, the work that's been done on that has been great, and it's great to see that as a, meeting the need for drivers to be able to, there's a bathroom, and there's a little kind of lunchroom area. So really need to see, and excited, hopefully, to see phase two eventually happen. So, yeah, that was very cool. I think that's all I have on transit.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Wojciechowski?
Thank you. The Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee had their meeting yesterday, and we have approved their revised, their new strategic plan that many of us have been anticipating. So look forward to that coming to council for a review of what they came to.
All right. I am so excited to announce, it is time for you to register your kids for Breakfast with the Bunny. Just saying. That's coming up, and that's all I have for parks. We will move on to city manager. Breakfast with the Bunny. That is happening on April 8th, so you probably want to get your tickets ahead of time. City manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not quite as exciting as Breakfast with the Bunny, but State of the City is on Monday, March 13th. Doors open at 6:00 PM, and my address will start at 6:30. Andy Radek from Oshkosh Media will be in touch with you regarding the presentations of the Community Partner Awards, and so we'll be matching you up, and so we'll be in touch with you shortly to, to let you know and see if you can help us. I know that one council member's not going to be with us, so actually, it actually evens it up with the mayor. You're going to be, you'll be pinch hitting for one of the council members, so we'll have two presenters, just like the Academy Awards, two presenters for the awards. We're really excited to be back in person and looking forward to it. So wait for a call from Andy. I do have a memo in your packet regarding facility engineering for repairs of masonry at the Oshkosh Public Museum. It's over $25,000, so I'm required to report that to council, but that was funded with some ARPA funds through the infrastructure funds that the council had identified. Council was aware during discussions during the budget that the, that Winnebago County was looking to change our partnership on Route 10. We've had discussion over the last several months, and on Friday, we came to a tentative agreement. It was a little late to, to get it into the agenda with a resolution and ratified and approved, so, but the parties have agreed to it. We wanted to get this out so that we can, we can, number one, notify Cobason, who operates Route 10, that we're going to stop that as of April 3rd. Our last day will be Saturday, April 1st. And we've identified a way to get that done through a shared ride taxi program that'll be on demand, that will take people from, between the Oshkosh and Nina Transit Centers. So it'll essentially provide the same service, but you'll receive it in a different way. You'll have to call ahead to get that. And we want to spend the month of March notifying people of that. I'll be asking council to ratify the agreement that's in your packet. I had enough time to get it in the packet, but I just wanted you to look at it if you got any questions. But this is something that we've been working with Winnebago County on for the past two and a half, three months. So I think it's a good pilot program to, to see if the demand still exists, and then see if that can be used as perhaps a pilot for other transportation issues that the county may be interested in. Because the county has some transit needs that are well beyond anything that Go Transit can provide, and that's why they're party to it, because it's connecting Valley Transit and Go Transit, and that's something that is in the county's interest to do. So you'll be seeing that for ratification at the next meeting. And then I have outstanding issues, and happy to answer any questions you may have about that or any of these other items.
City manager, I'm sorry, were we going to have the clerk maybe just talk a little bit about clarification on folks getting letters about their absentee ballots? Just what they can expect to do if that happens, if the ballot gets held up?
I'd be happy to have that, and probably more timely to do it at the next meeting, because that's when people will start getting interested in that. But we can clarify some things to, to get people to understand what they need to do, and we're happy to do that, and I think, yeah. It's not on the agenda now, so I guess I'd rather wait until the 14th, given the fact that.
But does that then create a time issue? I guess I was kind of thinking that was going to be part of this, but maybe not, on the outstanding issues.
We, we won't have the ballots until then.
Okay. Okay, so that works. Okay.
Yeah, I think the timing will be good if we do it on 14th.
All right. One other question I had, and I don't know who can answer this. It's been a couple of years, but council meeting dates for April. So the election is on 4th, are regularly scheduled. Council meeting would normally be on the 11th. Is that our signity dine?
Correct.
Reorg?
That is, no, the reorg would be the noon on the 18th.
Noon on the 18th, okay. All right, thank you. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.